So, at six o'clock, I'd like to open the January 14 Woodbury Rock Select Board Meeting. And first on the agenda are adjustments to the agenda, Michael or Brian?
I have one. There's a grant application that I was contacted by somebody from the San Romar Regional Planning Commission. They would like to write a grant for the town of Woodbury for their full design of the five priority sites from the Kingsbury Branch Tactical Plan. It's just barely getting put together, but I just want to, you know, they'll need a letter of support and I wanted to explain a little bit more about it, just so that we're, everybody's okay with going ahead with it.
Figure out, meet with us for that, or just send us a letter?
Pam said that she could send a letter, a suggested letter of support that we could tweak, and if we're interested in pursuing it. So, I'm basically, I have a little bit of information that I just wanted to share, and see if we're interested.
Well, we could do that since, since the Ramon Five are-
Yeah, we could stick her in that spot?
Yeah, well, we do that.
Okay. That's all I have to-
Hey, Susan.
Hi.
So, Brian, do you have any adjustments?
Laura, would that little pull-out surface-
Yes.
So, next up on the agenda is public comment, and Susan Martin just arrived. Susan, are you a member of the public, or are you in your auditing capacity tonight?
Oh, well, neither one will cost the town anything. I guess both.
Do you have any public comments?
Oh, no, I just want to let you all know that you're doing a good job. Appreciate your help. I do have some documents concerning the hazard mitigation plan that I'd like to ask, maybe you skip, what I should do with it. It's the, my hours-
Okay, yeah.
-that I put in. So, I'll just give this to you, and we can talk about it at another time.
Sure. I asked for folks to have them to me by, I think, the 22nd?
December?
The 21st? No, January.
Oh, God, I didn't know that was-
Because all, you know, even though our draft disaster mitigation plan is in FEMA's hands-
Right.
Who knows now with the government shutdown how long they're going to take to review it and get any changes back to us? And also, who knows how long it's going to take till we receive our grant monies? Because that has to go through first, I think, Ramon Emergency Management, then to FEMA to get those funds. So, I sent an email to Stephanie Smith today, wondering, okay, so, what's the protocol? How are we going to, number one, get the grant monies, and if we can get the grant monies, will they come after our plan is finalized, or will they give us the money just when they have a draft?
I'm in no hurry. Just wanted to get it off my books.
Actually, we're in no hurry, because I think we want to put it into the fiscal year 2025. So, we all know how slowly the wheels of justice and government grind. Okay. So, no public comment, other than hazard mitigation grant. Right. Next on the agenda is approve the bills to the town. I'd like to introduce a motion to approve the bills to the town that we've not seen since December, I want to say 10th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bills are approved. And we have now meeting minutes to approve from the last two select board meetings. One meeting is December 10th, and these are the final meeting minutes. I'd like to introduce a motion to approve these meeting minutes.
Second ask?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, for meeting minutes, we have the December 12 select board meeting meeting minutes. I'd like to introduce a motion to approve those meeting minutes as well.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, Laura, will you post these tomorrow?
Yeah.
You know how to do the electronic signature slash, as, slash?
Yeah, but I can scan those right there.
Oh, will you? Okay.
Yeah.
Pretty tricky. Thanks, my Lord. Yeah.
She's trying to finish up something to do, so I'm on here to go.
Oh, we're doing, yeah.
He's not coming, right?
Yeah, we made an adjustment to the agenda. We're going to talk about a-
We can sit in and listen.
A grant application for a design for the five priority sites.
So, the presentation's not happening?
No, he's a car trip. We called 0500. Said he was stuck. So, he'll be joining us on the 28th.
So, before I ran out of toner, I was able to print out, just, this is the first kind of, it's still a working document, but this is kind of a budget for the full design. So, this would, you know, we had, just to back up a little bit, we had the Kingsbury Branch Tactical River Basin Plan that was done this summer. It's still actually in work in progress. It's not finished yet, and one of the end results was that to have a 30% design, which is, have a partial design done for five priority sites, which we picked out during the course of the inventory. Initially, all five sites were in the village area. However, during the course of the summer, the road crew did the ditching on Valley Lake Road down to the school. That was one of the sites, so that's kind of off the list now. So, but there are still four sites within the village that are priority sites. They've done further testing down on those sites. One of them is at the Woodbury School, basically the parking area. The Fire Department Annex is another site. Church Street is designated as another site, and the fire station, and the post office, that little kind of ditch swale that runs into the Kingsbury Branches on their site.
Did they prioritize those, Michael, or have they just lumped them together?
Those, those are kind of lumped together as, they're called 1, 2, 3, 4. There is a number for them, and there's a separate work plan for each. But they would be, they would be part of this full design, the five, we decided that we would try for the five sites and see. The other site now is the town garage, basically the salt shed, trying to just contain the spilled salt and, you know, erosion running down into the woodland area over the hill, and stuff like that. So, what, I was contacted about, last week, by Pam Andrea. She's one of the senior planners for the Regional Planning Commission, and she is putting together a grant specifically for the town of Woodbury to pay for the full design for these five sites. So, that would be a professional design. It would happen over the course of this coming summer, and it would be basically 80% match, with a town 20% match, so 80-20, 20% town match. We could go with a 10% match. We have better luck in getting a word of the grant if we put up the 20%, which we could pretty much do with road crew work, and then time, mostly my, probably my time working with the Regional Planning Commission.
So, 20, so the bottom line is $54,000?
Yeah, the actual amount requested is $48,604. So, a 28% match would be basically $10,000, $9,720. A 10% match would be right around $5,000 approximately. So, and the other thing that we need to be aware of is that, long-term, with this grant application, they're asking if the town is willing to make a commitment for the operation and management of these, the difference, mitigation at these different sites. Mostly, that would mean sucking out the sediment that collects, there, most of the sites will have some type of collection basin, and I don't know much about the technology. It's kind of like a big cement cistern in a way. One of them is actually, I think, more like a septic tank that, you know, collects sediment, and then eventually you would have to suck it out, like, you know, getting somebody like hard again, or some sort of solution.
Or shovel it out if it stays.
Then, I don't know, I guess it just goes to a-
To the coventry, probably.
It can't be that dirty. I mean, it's just sediment. You could probably take it out with a shovel.
I don't know what they would do with it. Yeah. So, that's, and that's what I wanted to just, you know, to be aware of, that, and then, you know, the implementation of the design, we could pick and choose what we want to do. We don't have to do all these five sites, because that would be pretty costly. And my, so my thinking is, is to focus on the village sites, you know, like the school parking lot, and the Fire Department Annex, and maybe Church Street with that, those, you know, that sort of flooding area that we're, you know, trying to fix anyway.
Do you have plans for any of these?
Well, that's what-
Any and, or that's what they're going to give?
That's what, that's what it would be. There are plans, the watershed consultants, the people that did the survey, they have a 30% design plan. I had copies that I shared with the select board back, you know, a few months ago, and there's nothing really, anything newer. There will be, they haven't really finished the 30% design yet. That will be finished and will be part of this grant within the next few weeks, I would hope. Just for the design.
But this money is for the work, right? The $50,000?
It's for the full design. It's basically the-
Design is no work.
I saw you just said Regional Planning Commission was going to pay for the work.
They're, they're going to be doing some of the work. They're, they're basically writing the grant and overseeing the grant.
Because I'm looking at some of the, some of the topics here. One is construction, and bid documents, other expenses. So, this is just merely for the design.
Wow, that's pretty typical design stuff.
Yes.
So, then, when it comes to this, if we apply for this grant, and we say, okay, we're going to go forward, does this compel the town to do this work?
No.
In any timeframe or anything like that?
No requirement for a timeframe to do it. And what we would do, of course, is use the full design to apply for a grant, to pay for the work.
Right, and to go up to bid, I'm presuming, and all that.
Yeah, yeah. So, we would kind of do this, you know, piecemeal, you know, we, I'm thinking that we could just do the school and the Fire Department Annex, because those really are two parts of a single piece. The Church Street is somewhat indirectly involved, and the Church Street part, even though it's called Church Street, what they're looking at is the water flow that comes down Church Street, kind of the land up behind Ron Langivens, where there's a small brook there, the spring. And then they're also looking at the other side of Route 14, the lower part of the Cabot Road, where the, you know, there's road that comes, water that comes down Cabot Road, and it goes into a catch basin, and then runs on the Kingsbury Branch. And I don't know what happens on the Church Street side. I think it just runs into, runs into the Kingsbury Branch there. So, that's kind of a one-piece. That's, that's actually a pretty major project in and of itself.
We've been looking at that for a long time.
Right, yeah. So, you know, so the implementation, you know, for me, it would make sense to go after the Woodbury School and the Fire Department Annex as one piece maybe first. And whether to maybe include Church Street, because it is just, you know, 20 feet over from, on the bottom of Valley Lake Road. But we can, you know, we can figure that out in the future, you know. But there's, there's no commitment to implementation. This is just for the full design.
And it's possible that, if the design was done, that actually some of the work might be simple enough so that the town could do it, rather than going out again?
It's all pretty-
Bids and all the stuff?
It's all, the town could, road crew could certainly assist, I think, but it probably would be, require a contractor. It's kind of, I don't want to call it state-of-the-art, but it's, it's all sort of new stuff. And I, you know, I don't understand it completely myself, what they would actually do, but that's something that would be part of the learning curve.
Would this be something that we would get ready and put it out to the voters at a town meeting type of thing, to get approval to do this?
Yeah, we, we could, you know, we could also try, sort of like with the hazard mitigation grant, we could apply for a grant to do the work, and then probably there would be a 25%, 20% match, depending on who the grant was from, and we would go before the town, like we did with the hazard mitigation. Yeah, this is, this wouldn't happen for two or three years out. This, yeah, I'm sure that would probably be part of the approach, because it's, any, any of the work done will be expensive. I mean, I agree with you, the $50,000 just for the design is, that's a lot of money.
It is. And, Michael, you feel confident that you could meet the match requirement with the road crew and your town?
I think, I don't know, if we did the 20% match, you know, I'm not sure really how much the, how, what does she have down?
She has a 10% match down for $54,000.
Yeah, and that's what she was figuring out at first, thinking that Woodbury, you know, that would be easier for Woodbury to-
It sure would.
And it would be, I agree.
Because right now, it has you down for 30 hours, you got $15, so that's $450.
Yeah, and she didn't know what, you know, the road crew got per hour, so she, you know, there's just a $15 hourly rate, so, you know, Greg's rate to run the excavator would be, be higher.
You'd need an hourly rate for the machines-
And for, yeah, we could-
For the equipment.
Yeah, for the machines. So, you know, the machines and, and the road crew time would, would increase that amount quite a bit.
Yeah, so the-
So, we're already close to-
But, but would that come into this design phase?
Yes, because there'd be different test pits that need to be done with it.
The biggest amount of money is the engineering of this. It's for $40,000. You see that, Brian? Great town here, contractual.
Is that something Regional Planning Commission, you want to do the contracting, like they did with-
Yes, what they would do, they would, kind of like they have done for the tactical basin plan and for the inventory, they would overs, they would hire the contractor to do the design, and they would manage, you know, work with the contractor, and of course, you know, that's income for them too. So, this is basically a grant that gives them some work, and, you know, comes up with a full design for the town of Woodbury. So, you know, it's not like, we would get a chunk of money that we would pay out to the contractor. We would basically, you know, like they did for the local hazard mitigation.
And like they did with the Phase 2. It took them, even though it took them like a long, long time to choose a contractor, but that was-
Right, just like, it would be the same as the Phase 2 and the local hazard mitigation plan that we did. Basically, we, we hired them, but they, they did originally write the grant. So, yeah, so this would be another-
So, there's nothing compelling us if we do choose to go with this? Is there any agency compelling us to apply for this grant?
No.
Is this just something that-
This is, you know, Pam's aware of the town's, you know, situation, or, you know, just the fact that we're a small town, that these types of things we can't really afford. So, you know, she thought that, you know, if Woodbury was willing to go ahead with it, that, you know, they would write a grant and try to help us by refunding it. You know, otherwise, you know, we could try applying for grants for the implementation with the 30% design. You know, I haven't even thought of asking her if that would be a possibility.
I'm sorry, what do you mean by 30% design? Is 30% design on the other end?
30% design is like a, a site visit design by folks that are hydrologists, but not full-blown hydrological engineers. Yeah. So, the watershed consultants, and that's actually the name of the contractor that they hired, the people that are doing the survey work have enough experience to come up with 30% design, which is basically saying that, you know, this type of, this type of work, with this kind of catch basin kind of thing, would solve the problem for the erosion runoff into the Kingsbury Branch. But they don't have the expertise to actually do, like, the engineering, like, for the Nelson Road culvert that we, you know, the box.
Probably have the expertise, but they don't have the PEs.
Right. So-
Is it, is, would, would doing all this work put us in a better position as far as compliance with all the new clean water?
Yes, that's the whole purpose.
That's the whole thing. Okay, so it is something that probably have to be done at some point.
Yes, but in order for us to do the work, we would, whether the 30% design would hold up for submitting, you know, and applying for, for grants, or not, is, I don't know.
But perhaps the engineering cost would go down if the engineer had our 30% design?
Well, he will have a 30, or he, they will have a 30% design. That's part of the, the survey. That's, that's a byproduct of that. So, they would have that to work with.
If you feel confident, Michael, you can reach the 10% match, I would say go forward, especially if we're going to have to do that.
Right. I think we can easily meet the 10% match, and we probably could get halfway to the 20% match, but I know Pam originally thought that the 10% match would be, you know, within the scope of, of our abilities to-
Sure.
-to pay. I could ask her, you know, now that she, I just shared with her the, you know, Greg's hourly rate, and also, you know, I pointed out to her the, the rate schedule that she can look at for the equipment that would be used. Probably would be one of the 10-wheelers and the excavator. So, she would have some different figures for us. You know, I could try to have other figures. She could probably have more complete figures here in this budget for us to look at, and whether, I don't, she didn't give me a deadline for when this needs to begin, but if it was within the scope of our next select board meeting, I could have better figures for her.
Okay.
I can ask her that tomorrow, and-
Does she have a letter queued up that she would like us to-
She has a, she has a letter, I assume that she does, yes. Yeah. She could send that to us, and-
Yeah, that'd be good to take a look at.
Okay. So, what I could do is just call her again tomorrow, tell her that we're definitely interested, we're unsure of which match to go with, and get a sense from her of what, with the new figures that she has for the Woodbury road crew, whether that would be, you know, above the 10% match, close to the 20% match. And, you know, we'll go with the, the match that we're closest to, I think.
Okay, because you said that you felt it would be easier if we went with a 20% match?
The 20% match would show a bigger commitment from the town, which would be, you know, in our favor when the different grant applications are considered by whoever, I don't even know who this grant is with. You know, the same with the, you know, commitment to the operation and management of the-
Sure, yeah. Well, we can commit to that.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah. So, yeah, so let me try to find out a little bit more about, you know, what her new figures were, because I literally just gave those to her this afternoon, you know, maybe a couple hours before our meeting, so she could punch those in pretty quickly and, and have some new figures on that, and we could see how, how it matches up with the 10% match and the 20% match.
So, we would not have to do all for, we would not have to write an R of P-
No.
-to secure an engineer-
Regional planning commission will do all that.
And you said they've already got someone that they've chosen to-
I don't, no, they do not.
Or is that, if they, you mean they've got somebody for the 30%?
Yeah, the 30% is part of the survey that was done this summer.
Okay.
Yep, yep. That, that's the, what do they call it? Not scope of work, but there's something, deliverables, that's the term. Those, that's part of the deliverables.
You think they're doing this for other towns too?
For this, pretty much with the Kingsbury Branch, just Woodbury, that I know of.
Sure, we can, right?
Sure. Okay, so we'll, we'll-
More later.
See what the match is. Okay, so I'll just let her know that we're still interested. We have some questions, and kind of wait, want to wait to see until the budget is a little bit more put together.
Do you want that for the next meeting, Michael?
Yeah, let's have, that's okay.
I just have one question.
Sure.
You mentioned at the beginning that there are five sites.
Yes.
And now you said we're going to probably just do three. Is the original-
I'm talking about the implementation, further, further down the road, well, well into the future.
Okay.
The, the full design would be for all five sites.
Okay, that's what I was asking, the full design would be all five sites.
And then we can choose when and what to implement in, in the future.
So, it's basically a phase in?
Yeah, I mean, what we would do is, there'll be other, you know, the only, you know, the only way we're going to do any of this work is through grants, as far as I'm concerned. And what we would do is, and the Regional Planning Commission will help us, they'll kind of guide us to what grants would be appropriate, and we'll make applications.
Do you prioritize which one you want to start with?
Yeah, and I already have, you know, I talked about, you know, the prioritization in my mind would be fixing the whole bottom of Valley Lake Road, you know, and that would take two, possibly three sites off the list.
So, you think this would cure the problem, put the firemen on their annex, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's the whole reason, that's, I mean, that's a big reason for why we're doing all this.
Or by deciding to start over.
Well, the road crew did do some work, you know, lowering the road this fall, and putting a little bit of a trench there. And I haven't heard, you know, that two inches of rain we got early in December, I hadn't heard of any flooding at all. But, of course, the water from that runs right into the Kingsbury Branch. So, this is, this grant and the survey is to try to find ways of collecting that water, so that it either seeps into the ground and then seeps into the river, the brook, without the sediment from the road and the parking lot. And, you know, that's the, that's the crux of this project, is to keep erosion from running into the Kingsbury Branch. But it would also solve the flooding problem at the annex. That's part of the, part of the deal. And we would do the paving, you know, once this work in that area was done, for us as a town, my, my thinking is, is that we would do the paving, once all that work is done, pretty much, you know, right after. We have, and we would have the money in the paving fund to pay for it, so, and that wouldn't be a part of this implementation grant. That would be a part that the town would do on its own, having that pot of cash and the paving fund to, to pay for it.
But whoever's doing the design would have to know that that's the plan.
Yes, they would. Yes, I would want them to know that.
Do you think that's a possibility for this summer, or are we looking further out?
I would say as soon as a possibility for the following summer. The design would probably take the course of this coming summer, and then we would have to look for grants and apply for grants, and then, you know, hopefully get chosen for it. And, yeah, we could do that through the, through the winter, once the full design is done. And then, if we're lucky, we could do it the next summer.
Sure, in budget for it.
Yeah, in budget for it, exactly, yeah. So, and maybe it would be, hopefully, I'm hoping that it would be the following summer, you know, if we're lucky, it would be. But I don't know for sure. Pam, you know, this is something I've been talking with Pam about when I first started doing the survey, and she thought that it would be doable to do the design this coming summer and then do the implementation, whatever we chose to do for a first step. summer and then do the implementation, whatever we chose to do for first step, the following summer. And she knows of different places that, that we can approach for grants. So I'll let her know that we're definitely interested and to continue and I'll try to get a sense of the deadline from her so we can make a decision at the next select meeting. I think it's within the deadline, I think it's sometime in February that she needs to...
She needs to know that we're serious about that.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll have her send a letter of support so that we can look at it and tweak it any way that we...
Sure.
So the possibility of some of the design work happening in 2020 fiscal year?
Yes.
So does that mean you would have to put some match in the budget?
Yeah, we would put, yeah, we would put a match in the budget, yeah. So hopefully, you know, we definitely have a end of January deadline for that.
If you're confident about reaching the batch, why would it have to go in?
It wouldn't have to go in, you're right. I mean, it would be, especially, you know, it would be in kind, basically, it would be Roku time, equipment use.
Yeah, oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, probably no materials, and then it would be my time.
So with our new NEMRIC, do we have to show if we do get the grant, did the grant come fiscal year 2020? And if it does, we may have to show the grant monies coming in on one side as a grant and then going out.
Yeah, except we would never receive any grant money to spend.
Oh.
That would be all through the regional planning commission.
But you'd have to document the hours.
Of course, yeah, that would be, we would have to submit a report in order to meet our match, yeah, so the hours would be documented.
It's kind of the same as a local hazard mitigation, you know, whether or not we're gonna see those monies, if FEMA is gonna cut us a check for the $10,500, whatever.
Yeah.
Or $7,500, which is how much we're gonna have to pay regional planning. Whether that'll be cut to Woodbury, the town of Woodbury, or will that go directly to the regional planning commission?
It'll go directly to the regional planning commission.
Because if it comes to us, we have to show it coming in and going out.
Yeah, no, I don't, it would not come to us. It's like the, well, you know, the municipal road general permit, the grants in a, pretty much the same thing, we have to document all the, you know, equipment use, time, materials, stuff like that, and then we send that in as a report and then we get reimbursed, it's kind of a reimbursement thing.
All right, next up, town grants report.
Sure.
Exciting stuff.
Very exciting stuff, we got the clean site letter, and I thought you should all have a copy, because it's very special.
This is...
You've been waiting three, four years.
The C O C or the certificate of completion.
No, 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 that's not the C O C, this is the clean site letter.
It's a clean site letter.
Oh, well, then my minutes are incorrect.
The C O C thing was, yeah, that's something else, that has to do with the completion of the contamination monitoring that's been going on for how many years, Brian, long time?
Twenty-five.
Closing of, closing the site.
So with this clean site letter, then the town going now and... Are you in the structure?
No, not quite.
Okay.
Clean site letter means...
To get this thing done.
Well, this probably has gone to FEMA by now, but they still won't act on it until they get the, approve that other thing you were working on.
And that's in FEMA's, FEMA's hands.
Yeah.
I was told that as long as FEMA has a draft, that they could release the box.
Good, yeah, that, it sounded to me from Lauren that they had to approve it to some extent.
It was Stephanie Smith that told us that.
Yeah.
So, and then, yeah, then, next thing is we have to find out how much more money we're gonna ask for from them and give it another application.
Okay, we'll know how much more money.
Sort of, almost. Except for our last phase of the project, which we still will have no idea about, the stream restoration part, we'll still have to pump back.
Well, there'll be a grant for that, I'm sure.
No, it's part of our, it's part of our...
Part of it.
H G M G P, yeah.
Have to pump for that. Is that a technical term?
Uh, this, I sent you this, I also made your copy of my draft of the report for the town report, the status.
Yes, I did see that.
So once we get closer to, what did I say here, the Phase One environmental site assessment still has to be redone, and the BRELLA program is gonna pay for that, so there's no financial involvement for us there and we don't get to use that as part of our match because it's state money and it's a state program. But that's waiting for people at EPA to get back to work because the government's been shut down.
So that would be, that, the Phase One is more a federal thing as opposed to a state?
It's a federal requirement, yeah, it's a FEMA requirement. The first Phase One that we did way, way back was in order to get us in line for the Phase Two, which worked and we got all that stuff done. But now you have to have a Phase One within six months of the actual project, so. And then BRELLA decided, in order to qualify for that, there had to be a survey, we don't have a survey, so they decided they thought they could wrap it all into one contract, so that would be great, we'd get a survey too, that'd be nice. And then at some point, we'll get an award letter from FEMA and take that to the bank and borrow a bunch of money and buy a property, yippee.
Okay. So after we borrow the money, how quickly can we expect the funds from FEMA?
That I don't know, it's all reimbursement.
Right, so we have to show when would be saying that the town now has purchased the...
No, we have to do the whole thing.
Oh, so...
I don't think they reimburse in phases.
They don't.
I haven't been led to believe that they would.
We'd have to...
So...
So it'd be a short-term note?
Yeah. Not very much interest.
I'm sure we have to submit a pretty detailed report.
Final report, yeah.
Final report.
Before they finally release the money.
That's exciting, I guess.
Well, it's progress.
It is progress.
There's still a lot of, a lot of work to be done, yeah, really.
Yeah.
And the second part of your presentation tonight is the actual R F P responses to have the site demolished and stop taken away.
Yep. And I brought my letter opener, 'cause I hate ripped envelopes. So if you, if you don't mind, I'll open the envelopes.
This is like the Academy Award.
The envelope, please. We're just gonna note who, we're not gonna read this.
Right, right. I can, I can know who this is from by reading the return for this.
Yeah. That's true, we could just...
I'll put together a cost matrix.
Okay.
And in the next couple of weeks, we'll sit down with Diana and Don Mosh, the engineer who's been helping with this, and do the evaluation and make the bid award on the 28th.
Well, you don't have to, I mean, there's no rush to give the bid award, but...
But I don't want it to get stale either.
No, I mean, if it's clear, there's no reason not to, because people are working and they need to plan their summer projects and...
Right up against the town report that one, too, so if this has to be a separate article, increase, you know, our match, we have to let the folks know, so that's why I believe that the 28th is, is very important. Unless you can delay the town report printing.
No. No, but you'll, you'll have enough of an idea of the total cost without, once you look at these, without having to, without having to award the contract.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so this bid is from Duvois Construction.
This one's from Mountainside Excavation, East Hardwick.
This one is from Blue Mountain Trucking and Excavation, South Broadgate, Vermont.
This one is from Lamberty Excavating.
What was yours again, Skip?
Pardon?
Blue Mountain?
Blue Mountain Trucking and Excavation, from South Broadgate. So if you can trust me with these, or if you wanna just make a copy of the bid sheet, I'll put together a spreadsheet and a matrix. Can you trust me with them?
Yeah.
You want me to get them together?
I don't have to do it tomorrow, if you wanna look at them tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
I'll keep them like Thursday or something.
Okay, so town report, you're working on the select board report, and Michael's working on the Roku report. Okay. We have enough signatures for the Center for Economic Development Corporation, $300, even though I think one of our auditors, Eagle Eye, noticed that this petition actually has the wrong date on it, but, you know. I don't think the people who signed it really noticed that this talks about the annual town meeting held on Tuesday, March 5, 2018.
Well... You're getting scared.
So my question is, do you really want this to be a separate article, or do you just want it to be back in with all the others?
I would say back in with all the others.
Yeah.
Keep it simple.
Okay. So Brandy's working on some kind of budget thing for you to talk about. We have our town maps, our tax maps.
Really, really?
Yeah, well, not, like physically.
Wow.
But Pam DeAndrea was, was working on them, and she just had to click a final part of her progress, and I'm gonna go through them briefly and make a bunch of updates on the names of the property owners, and then she'll print something out and...
Are they more precise than the ones we have now?
I don't think so.
Oh.
They look nicer.
Okay, could we use that as a, as the survey for the Woodbury store instead of hiring a survey?
Not a survey, no. Unfortunately, I mean, it was, the new tax maps are the result of a V-Trans program that we got involved with, and I thought it would be really an updating of the tax maps, but it really wasn't. It was really copying the old tax maps and copying all the surveys that have been submitted since, like, 90s when those tax maps were written, and they didn't go, yeah, anyway, it's fine, but they're not surveys. They didn't go back, the people who did the work for V-Trans did not go back and look at all the deeds for all the subdivisions that have happened since the last tax maps were done.
So the clean site letter, getting back to this, do you think it's important enough that we post it on the website?
Oh, sure, yeah.
It's big news.
Yeah, really, yeah. Maybe you can put a, or you can put a little, like,...
Stars all around it, yes.
Spend a...
Flashing?
Yes.
It's been a major goal for a few years now.
Really?
Okay, that's my significant step. Can I have a creative license to do whatever I want to?
Sure.
You want the electronic copy, you probably already have it, I sent it to you.
Cool. Thank you, Diana. Good news. I mean, I want you to tell my folks. Something like the matrix.
All right.
Next up is our treasurer, is Smith.
Starting financial statements and balance sheets. And, Michael's. I brought one here, just to steal yours. I transferred $13,000 today to cover today's A P. Income over, I calculated well since back December 26th. Delinquency taken was $3,304.10. And cash receipts, we took in $3,303.89.
So those are for permits and things like that, cash receipts?
That is for fire department insurance reimbursement.
Okay.
Land recording, recording copies, prepaid taxes already, vault fees. Online, there was electronic transfer for $28 for civil fines in that time frame.
Civil fines from speeders, speeders, or dogs?
It doesn't break it down. So I made some adjustments, I added the trucks.
Oh, the trucks.
So are we gonna have to bite it down here?
What page?
10. So a couple things, so we have the new piece of equipment, which this is...
What was that, payment schedule?
Yes and no. They had decided July 1st, I had switched it to October.
October 2019.
Yep. So that'll start this fiscal year, just don't look at the dates. We still have...
And is everything, the thing, all the stuff with Daimler, are they happy now?
No.
Yeah, I saw that today.
No, and I'm like, stuff right in the middle of, why don't we have a contract yet and...
Do you want me to get involved? 'Cause I can be short.
Sure.
Okay.
I am short this week.
Actually, I called Maria today, hoping to be able to talk to her, but Skip, if you wanna do it, go ahead, I mean, I've been trying to guide this thing through too, because I sort of feel responsible for the truck.
Yeah, I've been on the project and just reading an email.
In the end, they're gonna want his signature, I did mention you were leaving, so they do want his signature on it.
I'm happy to.
Okay, if you want to do that, yeah. For continuity reasons.
She hasn't sent anything back saying she needs more information, so I don't know what the delay is, but...
Okay, I sent her, you know, when we were sending those emails to her, I sent her an email saying, you know, that if there's anything else you need to contact, you know, you and I, and I haven't heard anything either, and I was surprised to see the...
I called her personally to make sure and clear up any information, if she hadn't received anything, and we were fine, but the other company wants money on their truck.
Right.
Yeah, I don't blame them.
Right.
Just been hanging around. So Brandy, so this'll start not on July 1st, 2019, but October 1st, 2019?
Yes, yeah, and that was just, just a rough...
Okay, but the...
But they will be sending us a new, yes.
Okay, so the lease payment, lease payment is what the lease payments are, this is the total of 27?
And it breaks it down between the interest and the principal.
So we do the crew fund to review this.
Right.
So that being said...
I have one other question about Daimler, did you get any kind of confirmation from her about the audit? Was she okay with what you sent her, you haven't heard?
She hasn't said yay or nay yet.
Okay, all right.
She doesn't work for the government, does she?
No, she doesn't, unfortunately.
So this year, this next, this year, this will be our last payment for 13 freightliner and 14 freightliner. But, see the calculation, so we are gonna actually, if we are budgeting hypothetically for $90,000, we are gonna have to borrow what's already in the herd. have to borrow what's already in the HERF fund, because it's not gonna cover them.
So...
So, knocking the HERF down currently, is that 13, it's gonna be down to 5.
Okay, so there will be some reserve in the HERF fund after everything is settled down?
Just around five grand.
Yeah, but that'll make you nervous.
I'm just making you aware of that.
Okay.
So, there's no cushion.
Yeah, we knew it, which was pretty well anticipated.
There's no money going into the HERF, we're actually gonna be taking money out of the HERF to cover these bills this fiscal year.
For this year.
We have some surplus that we're okay with doing.
Yeah, that was, we were aware of that.
So, this, I made this nice, big and pretty, this is the current running tabs of the do to, from that's on your balance sheet.
First, old eyes.
And that's where you're at.
So, this is, this is the 5,000?
Paving.
Oh, these are all the paving.
Paving is $41,000.
Oh.
So, yeah, these are all the breakdown of what you're currently at, and if everybody would like a copy to take with you.
Yeah, sure. Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Yep. Just don't plan any, to get anywhere out of there.
No.
And was there still conversation about...
Sylvia.
No.
No. Fire department.
Yeah, were we still planning on leaving that in there, was that, I don't recall?
As a reserve thing?
No, it was stuck in there for emergency purposes, in case...
I think it might have been one time, they went off the road, we had to hire a big wrecker.
To go back up.
Back up.
Right.
Yeah.
But I was just bringing up, I don't know if the discussion was still...
So, money's just sitting in there right now, cutting it fast, yeah.
What's your name? Did you want to see the other?
Yeah, let me notice.
You can't have them. I'm just letting you look at them. I can eat copies.
Yeah.
These are just my equipment calendar, so I know when we're done with them, releases. So, yeah, these two guys are done as a...
Issue.
Seven, one, when I pay this, those two, yep.
Well, that's pretty significant also.
And then we have...
Yeah, I'll need a copy of those, just to make sure my HERF fund...
That's 23.
Calculations are okay.
So, do you want me to, you know how we created the HERF schedule?
Yeah. Yeah.
We're technically not going by it. Yes and no. Now that the equipment are in the, so we're all tweaking, so that...
What do you mean, we're not following?
Well, I haven't installed the new piece of equipment, which you can't have that either.
Okay, I need copies.
I haven't installed.
I'll put that in the HERF.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll make all the...
New adjustments?
Adjustments into the HERF, and I'll send it to you to make sure it's okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
So, I'll get you copies of these, I'll make two more copies of these. Any other questions?
Do you want me to give you this different budget items for the town highway outside of the meeting?
Well, we have something, budget update, if you can hang around till 7:45.
Okay.
Because I have another item for Ron Wells' salaries at Lister, that we'll have to change.
Okay, sounds good.
Patrick?
Hey, Patrick.
How you doing?
How are you doing?
Good.
Yep, so for the town road, I don't really have a whole lot to report for the road crew, you know, it's winter time, plowing and sanding, and just trying to keep up with the weather. Everything is holding up well, although I learned tonight that there is a truck down, I guess, which I didn't know about.
Which one?
One of the 10-wheelers, I assume. I think it's the 1999 International six-wheeler. Oh, the six-wheeler, that's, that's kind of just sitting in the yard, so I'm not sure what's... It's a standard shift truck, correct? Yep. So, we're gonna utilize that to have Peter Daley take his CBL test, but apparently the rear end has an issue. Yeah, yeah. So, if you take it to have his CDS test...
You're gonna be in trouble.
Yeah, they'll inspect the truck and say, what are you talking about?
That's one that's got a cracked rear end housing that drips.
Yeah, that drips all the time, yeah, and it's, and the gears and stuff are pretty, pretty noisy in there, so, yeah. So, would they use one of the 10-wheelers? Well, those are automatic.
Automatic, right.
So, he would be limited to driving an automatic.
He's got a truck to borrow.
Oh, yes.
And he stopped there today, and I guess Tim and Neil's gonna go with him to cut the test, so he has the CBL driver.
Okay.
So...
So, it sounds like Peter's all set for this.
I see, and that's the 23rd.
23rd of January. Yeah, so that's pretty much it for the, I mean, the road crew reporting, and then, you know, I did want to discuss the trees on Ensworth Road.
Mike McGlynn's trees.
Mike McGlynn's trees, yeah.
Did we get some bids from him?
Yes, yeah, I've got bids.
The danger trees.
I'll give you the whole litany of, so I called A&amp;B, I called Jamie Benjamin, called Matt Leach, and I called Kirk Thompson. I had to call A&amp;B twice before I got someone, or, I don't know, and they were gonna go look at the trees and submit a bid, I don't, they'd never called me back, and he didn't mention, Adam mentioned that they were very busy working, doing work for the Harvard Electrics, so he didn't ever get back to me, so that's, that's where they're at. Jamie Benjamin was not interested in cutting the trees, but he did recommend a fellow named Joe Bain, so I also contacted him. Matt Leach got back to me very promptly, submitted a bid, and then later I called him again, just wanting to make sure that he had insurance, and he hand-delivered his insurance to me the same day that I called. Kirk Thompson is actually, has been contacted by Mike McGlynn to deal with the trees once they're dropped, and he's not interested in dropping them. He's also... Interested in dealing with them after they're dropped? He's interested in dealing with the logs, but not the branch brush debris, and he wondered if the town, with its chipper, the road crew would want to deal with that, so... I don't even know if that chipper works. Right. So, that's, we can discuss that. I did check with Greg to see if the road crew would be willing to do that, they said they would be willing to do it if we told them to do it, but they, obviously, they wouldn't do it until next spring, summer. And then, you know, as far as I'm concerned, if we have them do that, they should keep track of their times and their equipment, and we should bill Mike for that. It's not our responsibility to chip up the... So, so I contacted Joe Bain also, he was very prompt in getting back to me, he sent me a bid, and also his proof of insurance. Matt Leach has sent a bid for $2,800 to drop the trees, and Joe Bain sent me a bid for $3,000 to drop the trees, so as far as, you know... Did that include, once they're dropped, limbing them? No. Okay, so this is just to... They may limb them to drop them, you know, I don't know how, what the process will be in dropping them, but basically, they would just be dealing with getting the trees on the ground, however they would do that. They were both, you know, called them, they responded, they were both, you know, very prompt, so, you know, Matt Leach is $200 cheaper, but otherwise, you know, as far as I'm concerned, they both seemed equally responsible. So, this is out of my scope, so if we drop them, see if we contact one of these gentlemen, and we drop them, could we leave the trees on the ground till spring to have them limbed? Because it's gonna be dropped in, like, a foot of snow now. Yeah, it's basically, you know, we're, we're dropping, I mean, this is my thinking on that, we're dropping them to eliminate our liability in case one of them fall down. Which one of them has? Yeah, once, once they're dropped, our responsibility is... Is done, correct. So, dropping them now would be, I think, the more prudent thing to do, or dropping them as soon as possible, and then, you know, Kirk asked that, Kirk Thompson asked that we let him know when that's gonna happen, and it sounds like he would come and get the logs soon, and whether he would be, you know, as far as I'm concerned, if he wants the logs, then he should, whatever branches are left, it's up to him to take them off. Because basically, once the trees are down on the ground, they're the property of the... The owner. The owner. Right, that's not a property. So... The only reason why we're doing this is because they're danger trees. One is already broken and fallen by a neighbor across the road. And the tree warden has said that they are dead. Hazardous, yeah. And hazardous, so...
So, we get them down and...
That's it, we're done.
Give Kirk a call and...
Give Mike a call and say, you know, here you go. I could check in with Mike, and I don't know if Kirk has shared with Mike that he only wants the logs, you know, the trunks of the trees, I don't know if Mike knows that or not.
So, Kirk might limo them just to cut, because you gotta cut the trunks up anyways.
Yeah, he would, you know, he would have...
Just leave the limbs there for Mike to take care of in the spring or whatever.
Well, if he does that, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. And as far as us asking the road crew to do the work, I would prefer that we just, you know, that we be done with it once we drop them. Absolutely. It's Mike's responsibility. Yes, Susan.
Do we have any requests from Michael McGlynn to drop the trees? Anything from him requesting?
Well, earlier this summer, he talked to me about dropping the trees, I think, and it was more, he wasn't worried about them falling down or reliability, he wasn't aware that they were dead, and kind of wanted them removed, and was, you know, letting me know that they were in the town right away, and would the town want to take them down, and we have talked to Paul Gillis about, you know, who's responsible for what, and, and in the, in the end result, you know, for any destruction, or if they hurt someone falling down, the town would be liable, so that's why we are wanting to drop them, but beyond that, once they're on the ground, they are the property of the property, you know, even though they're in the town right away. So, you know, I would just like to keep it clean, and we did our part, and, and, yeah, it's up to Mike to do his part.
Okay, thank you.
And the statute indicates that once the town tree warden has submitted that these trees pose a danger and they're dead, then the municipal board can go in and have them taken down. What we're trying to stay away from is precedent of being... A landscaper. Landscaper.
Yeah.
We don't want that. We don't want to be a landscaping contractor for it. So, you know, Michael, what's your sense? You know, I would rather go with the lowest cost. That's, I mean, I think we would be fine with either, and the costs are close, but one is $200 lower, so...
Yeah, I know both of them as well, and, yeah, both of them are good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Make the motion, go with Matt Leach at $2,800.
Second, huh? On the favor? Fine, okay. So, I'm fine with contacting Matt and Joe and letting them know. Okay, and I'm fine with contacting Mike McGlynn. Okay. Letting him understand what we're going to do, and if these gentlemen could call me, if you could call me, use the time in which they... Right, I'll try to get a, I will get a date from them, and I'll let Kirk know that when I... Because I'm sure Mike won't want to be there to watch. And I'll give Brandy the insurance stuff, yeah. We are actually ahead of schedule. But everybody's here, so... This is starting. Do you expect any more folks from here?
Do you remember if some other school board members show up? I don't know, I didn't get RSVPs from everybody.
Okay, because we are actually 10 minutes ahead of schedule, if you want to delay.
No, I think we should go forward, I don't think it's that, I mean, Stephen Murphy, I think everybody knows Stephen, if you don't? And he has been our point person, Steve, you might want to call here. He's been our point person, and they should call the articles agreement, so it's good that he's here, but...
I do have a couple of questions, just kind of backdrop to how we got to where we are, that we could use the time. I just, I'm wondering when, when the original meetings were done to, to merge, and there was something that occurred that had the Woodbury School Board saying that this wasn't, the merger wasn't possible, and was that because of Lakeview's insistence on not merging?
No, in the very beginning, I wasn't involved.
Okay, all right.
So, but I have been involved, obviously, for, gosh, almost two years now, and what I'm aware of is, all the discussions prior to me getting on the board, basically, came to naught, the parties could not come to agreement about a voluntary merger, and I think there were various reasons.
Could I just interject here, because I was on the school board then, and I was part of that? There was no desire on the part of any of the schools to merge at that point, it wasn't, as though one of the schools wanted to merge another.
I was just wondering if there was one. Okay, good.
No, but I think it is important for everybody to understand, and I'm sure some of you do, that when I got on the board, there was an effort to not merge, but to accomplish basically the same ends of Act 40 search without a merger. What could we do voluntarily between, among the schools to make the most out of all of our assets and our resources? And we had some excellent discussions. The school districts, including the Grassbury and Wauka, were all working together, we actually came up with a plan. We had specific things we were going to do, that we wanted to do to advance a really integrated education system here, and we knew, and we thought, and we talked about how at some point, that would mean, we would, we would want it to include moving students from one school to another, depending on what the schools were going to do, and use the strengths of the particular schools, in a nutshell, and we went to the secretary at the time, Rebecca Holcomb, and had a meeting with her. She was having meetings with all the affected supervisory unions, and everybody told us you get 15 minutes, and, you know, we talked with her for an hour, and people kept coming to her door and saying, eh, 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 but she, she was very interested in what we were talking about, because we were all there, and we were all saying the same thing, how we thought we could accomplish this, working together. Anyway, so when the first report came out, that was her report, and, and, and it did not recommend that we merge. But then she resigned, over some dispute, I'm sure, with the governor, and the next secretary came along and said, you need to merge. So, that's sort of how we got to where we are, and it was the 11th hour, you know, it was literally sometime in November, I can't remember the exact date now, when the final report was due on November 30th, and we were all taken aback. So, it's been a really a hurry and, and catch-up kind of process, and it has not been clear, and I think that's one of the messages I have to deliver tonight, is eat, things are changing, or, let me say, new information is coming up literally every week, and we're being taken by surprise. And so, it's really hard to pinpoint where we are. A couple of updates I do want to share with you. One is that the supervisory union did not issue correct notice on the organizational meeting.
I saw that.
And they were off by a day, basically, they included the day of the meeting, and you can't do that, it has to be 30 days, not counting the day of the meeting. So, they had to pull back and reschedule that, and now it's scheduled, we don't, we don't actually have a date, because, ah, we were gonna do it the third week in February, but here, this is the illustration of what we're dealing with. Then we, the, the lawsuit that you may have heard about...
Sure, yeah.
Actually, the lawyers got together and agreed on a stay. A stay is different than an injunction, the court, the judge did not issue an injunction to stop everything, but the lawyers agreed on a stay so that they could both prepare their cases more thoroughly and be ready for a hearing. And that stay postpones the organizational meeting until at least the third week in February, and we don't actually, I don't actually know today, as I sit here, what that day is, maybe there's a set date, but it's, it's late, and then, so we have to set the organizational meeting after that, so we just lost basically a month.
A month, yeah.
And it's really hard, because the other deadlines, I'll, I'll give you an example, so... And it's really hard because the other deadlines, I'll give you an example. So if there's going to be a new board, the merged district will have a new board. Those new board members, according to these articles, have to file six weeks before the election. So you have to start backing this stuff up and thinking, there's almost no budget. And never mind the budget.
I was just gonna ask that. What does that do with your budgeting process?
It makes it very, very challenging because, I'm gonna tell you another update, which is even more problematic. So a week ago or so, we, I want to try to be clear here. We have a couple of committees that have been meeting. Now, they're not formal committees. They can't take any action because not the organizational meeting hasn't happened and all that good stuff. But we're meeting to discuss things today. One of them is about the Articles and Steve has been a representative on that. And the other is about the finances. And we, we were having, I thought, a very constructive conversation about what a merged budget would look like. And then, at the last meeting, the supervisory union leadership told us that their calculations around taxes would create extra taxes for Hardwick. Our taxes would go down a little bit, Hardwick's taxes would go up. Now, I gotta tell you, first of all, I was very skeptical about this. Like, because what they were describing to me was like, I don't know how it can happen. I just don't see how it can happen. And if it does happen, the voters in Hardwick will never approve that. Never approve spending more money, basically, to take on the other two schools, right? That's it in a nutshell.
Right.
So then I found out just, oh God, what day was it? Probably Saturday, I got an email. I think all the board members got an email. Basically retracting that statement and saying what they told us was not 100% accurate and we would learn more at our meetings this week. So to me, that's very symptomatic of what we're dealing with here right now. We don't know.
So they're making it up as they go along.
Well, they're finding things out as they go along. It's not clear. Act 46 is not particularly clear about a lot of details and the Articles are not particularly clear about a lot of details. Because, you know, you start getting into not just school law, but tax law and even real estate law. When you start talking about who owns what and moving properties and all that good stuff, it gets very complicated. And then you talk about election laws and having these meetings to choose whether you're gonna vote by Australian ballot or not. And none of that can happen and the clock is ticking. So in terms of our budget, I'm actually very worried because a week ago, I thought, I don't know what's gonna happen to the budget. Now, depending, we'll learn tomorrow night. We have our regular school board meeting tomorrow night and hopefully we'll learn more. But as of a few days ago, I thought it was, we were gonna have to put together our own Woodbury budget just in case.
Which actually Emu, Emu and Stowe are doing, I know they're in a different situation, but they are putting together two budgets.
I know.
There's almost a.
I thought we had.
Is there anything happening in the legislature just to kind of stop this?
Well, I've reached out to Davi Acaboni, who I think, you know, is pretty well placed and all this stuff. And all he said was, you know, he, the stay that the lawyers agreed to creates more time.
No, it doesn't.
But I have.
Well, it does in a way.
We got mixed messages on that too because they, they say it's not a stay.
Oh. So anyway, that's where we are. But it's, it's so messy. I, I think we'll know more tomorrow night and I think maybe some of you, one or two of you were planning on joining us tomorrow night, so.
They'll be there.
Should be very helpful. Because time is running out. We cannot keep doing this. It's gonna be the end of January. We are not gonna have a budget for the town report. I promise you that. There's just no way. Whether we even have one for town meeting is a, is a huge challenge. But presumably, the merger's going forward and that's not what we should be focused on. We should be focused on a unified budget. That's what I expect to hear tomorrow night. So at least that puts us back where we were a couple of weeks ago. But I think the big question for the school board and the select board right now is what direction do we want to take with regard to the property? We all agree that the town owns the property. In the draft agreement that Attorney Gillis wrote, it identifies that the, the library building belongs to the school district. I don't know how it can because it's on the town's property.
The, the contents of the library belong to the library. Not all of the contents either.
Yeah, I don't believe he addressed the ownership of that.
I didn't bring a hard copy with me tonight. But my feeling about that document actually is it was actually really pretty good. I have several questions. It looks very familiar to me. I had already seen one from another town.
Really? Yeah.
Yes.
Imagine that.
And, and so it, it, it looks pretty solid to me generally. And I think we could pretty quickly put together a small group that could really hone in on, or we could just do it ourselves, you know, over two or three weeks. I'm sure we could come up with a document. The thing is, we need a document for right now because we have no agreement.
Right. What I'd like to do is move forward with this.
Yep.
This document for right now to protect the town's asset, which is the land, the buildings, and also to protect you guys going forward. Because I understand that the superintendent had some questions regarding, well, how can you be in that building if you don't have an agreement? And so I think we should move forward with this so we have an agreement in our hands and say, okay, here's our agreement and show that to the new unified district and say, and say, these are the terms and conditions that the town of Woodbury is willing to operate under for the new elementary school district.
Well, I think, in my mind, if it's, you do something for right now and then you modify it.
As needed.
When you go into a unified district, the language would be a little different going forward. But yes, I'm 100% with you on that. Now, the only thing is, so, and any school board member who disagrees with me should pitch in here. But I think we should talk about this tomorrow night at our meeting and then we should literally start going back and forth on the language. But I, I need to let the supervisory union attorneys take a look at it too.
Why would you need that?
Because sooner or later, they're gonna have to take a look at it.
Right, but.
I mean, they are still our administrative body. I don't anticipate a problem.
Well, you never can tell. Wouldn't this agreement just be between the Woodbury School Board, school district as it's comprised now, and the town?
Yep. I mean, the two municipalities in my mind are making an agreement, exactly. So I agree with you about that. But I think that just to make sure we're not running afoul of anything else, I think we should have them take a look at it. I don't see any harm in it. Because in the end, you're right, it's the two municipalities that are agreeing.
The two municipal entities.
Municipal entities.
Right.
It would be a more open, inclusive approach that might.
There's just so much confusion. I'm just assuming they get out in front of some of this stuff.
So we could send them a courtesy copy and say, this is the lease that we've agreed to.
Well, we can send them a draft to tell them what we're thinking about. I'd be all for doing that. I don't see any harm in it because in the end, it's us that we, we make the agreement, whatever we think makes sense, so.
I think one of my questions in an email to you is, have you hired an attorney?
No, we have not yet, but I started looking into it.
Okay.
Because there's just so much confusion. I am just concerned. So I contacted the VSBA and asked them if they had any attorneys they could recommend. Because I, you know, there's a lot of attorneys out there, but that doesn't mean they're any good at this law. So I'll, I expect to know within a matter of days if there's somebody we can contact. And I hate to do it. I hate to spend the money, but I think it's just so complicated.
You have to protect yourselves.
I agree, we're gonna have to.
Because our town attorney said you should get this done as quickly as possible.
Oh, I agree. I agree. As quickly as possible. And I don't, we haven't had any discussion about it yet, so we'll start that tomorrow night. But I think we can, I don't, I don't think it, to me, it looks fine, you know. It's just a matter of, there's a couple of little things I made some notes on, the questions that I would ask. But, you know, I may just be wrong. I may be just misinterpreting it and once we clear that up, we don't have.
I have a question about the library property, but I guess I haven't seen this. So this is from Paul Gillis saying that the school district owns the library?
No. Well, I thought that's what it said. I don't.
I just don't understand.
One of the conditions, whereas, I believe it does address.
Whereas the Woodbury Elementary School building land, he did not include the adjacent building. What I did is, I think Michael was, I think, this is Michael's note, to include the adjacent building, which is the community room in the library.
Right.
So that would be part of the lease. Because we believe that the town owns that building.
Because it's on the town's property.
Right. And the addition to the building was built by a state of Vermont library's grant that my wife wrote for. I don't know.
The second part.
The second part.
The part of the library is a now, yeah.
Right. Because the original part was built as an extra classrooms?
Yes. There's a picture somewhere of me standing on a roof, putting nail in them shingles. I was, yeah, that's what it was, quite an experience. But yeah, it was done by volunteer labor. A lot of the materials were donated. A lot of the work was donated, even by the people who did professional work.
So, so when that was done, was that considered owned by the Woodbury School District?
I did some research on that. And there was a town meeting, whatever year it was, I have it here, so. There was an approval to spend $6,000 for a first year lease on a portable classroom. And that's when people said, hey, this is crazy, you know, let's do something better. So there was actually another meeting to reconsider that, um, motion, that article that was approved. And it was overturned. And then there was another meeting to approve $50,000 to pay the, for the Woodbury Town School District to pay for the construction. And I don't know if there was ever any calculation of how much extra went into it, like the labor and all that stuff like that.
No, I don't believe so.
Was that a select board meeting or a school?
No.
No, it was a special town meeting.
Special town meeting.
Because at the regular town meeting, we had approved the temporary building. And we, we had another one just to overrule that and, and vote. In fact, in fact, it took about 10 minutes, you know. Everybody was in agreement about it and bing bang boom. Yeah, no, it was, it was, so I think that building was intended to be for the.
School.
But nonetheless, it still sits on the town's property. So all of that should be clarified in, in the document that the town owns all this and here's the agreement between the town. And, and one of the questions was, you know, Diane brought up, was about the, the wetland, which is also owned by the school district. And so you start thinking about this, do we want, what's the ultimate goal here? I mean, obviously, the ultimate goal is to protect the town's assets. But in, in, if the merger's going forward, which I think it is, there's this question about, don't we have to transfer the property to the, to the new unified district?
Who's we?
The town.
The town.
Yeah, I gotta be careful. Pronouns I use.
Right. I can't see the town doing that, but.
Well, I, I would differ. I mean, for me, I would like to see the school continue being the way it is. And if that's gonna be, if we, if we take a tough stance that way and they just say, okay, all the kids in Woodbury are gonna go to Hardwick, then we've, we've lost. So I would, I would prefer that there be an understanding that the town owns all of that property that we, because there's an article, there's the section A and there's a section B where if they ever decide to close a school, we can buy it back for the dollar that we.
Well, in fact, they have to sell it back for a dollar unless we don't want it.
But the issue with that is, I know that article, I think, by heart now. When, when they sell it back or they sell it back to us, there are five conditions that have to be met. There are certain stipulations on what you can do with that property for five years. And to me, that's just a nonstarter.
But we can strike those from the agreement.
Well, I'm looking at a note.
Negotiate to you.
Looking at a note from, from Stephen and it said they couldn't come to, they didn't even start discussing any of the, those.
Well, this is another problem that's developed, is the timing on the articles.
May I add something on the point here on the, on the conveyance or non-conveyance of the property and the articles of agreement? First, I'd like to make a correction. I attended a meeting here on the 19th and I expressed my opinion that contracts entered between, or contracts entered between the district after November 1st, 2018, prior to July 1st, 2019, would be honored by the new union district until 2020. I stated that was two years. So I was correct in, in, in my belief that contracts would be honored until maybe June 30th or July 1st, 2020. So essentially, it'd be good, good for one year, not two. So that's the correction I made. The, those contracts are addressed under Article 7, default Article 7. And they, they reference individual employment contracts in the last paragraph. But they also state in the first paragraph that the new union district shall provide transportation of students, assignment of staff, implementation of curriculum in a manner that is consistent with the contracts, collective bargaining agreements and provisions of law that are in effect during that academic year. And my, my belief at the last meeting was that these contracts would include a lease, because we were discussing a lease at the time, under ownership, town ownership of the school and a lease to the new union district. Essentially, that, I think we're here discussing a lease with the Woodbury District. And then we were considering a lease beyond with the new district. Okay. So that was on the 19th. On the 20th of December, I attended the first meeting of the Articles Committee. And the, the committee made what I thought was good progress. I think all the members agreed that we were making good progress on, on all the points except one, and that was closure of the school. There was disagreement about how we proceed on that. Standard and Greensboro made a proposal that would have amended the Articles to give the, to reconfigure the composition of the school board. And it essentially would have given Hardwick four seats on the new board and then each of the other three towns one seat. That was Standard's proposal, uh, Standard and Greensboro, that was their proposal. And essentially, a counterpart to that, at least the way I viewed it, was that the schools, the, the towns in which the schools are located, would have sole authority over closure of the school. Now, that, that sets a higher safeguard to the operation of the schools and protection to the operation of the schools and puts that authority back in, in, in the town. Under the default Articles, that right is extended, it would be extended to both Hardwick and Woodbury because we, these are town schools for, for two years. Lakeview, because they're a union school, would be subject to closure by an affirmative vote of the entire district. Okay. So there's, there's a lot to it, but, okay, so now, now.
Still waiting on some.
Okay, good. So we reached, I think, cooperative, cooperative consensus on a lot of points regarding enrollment and having choice within the new district. So parents or guardians could request that their, that their students attend other schools. We were making good headway, but we got stuck at that point of closure. So we agreed that we would meet again in a week's time, December 27th, and come back to that issue. We came back on December 27th and at the outset of the meeting, Joanne LeBlanc informed us that she had been, that she, that she received information from the OSSU attorney regarding the, the property in Woodbury, the ownership of the property and how that created uncertainty because it's not squarely addressed in the Articles. because it's not squarely addressed in the articles. And it's my understanding that the attorney, his conclusion is that if the property in Woodbury, the school-related property is not conveyed to the new union district, then Article 3, Article 4, and Article 6 would not squarely apply. There's still some uncertainty about this, but he concluded that, and we can, we can come back to this tomorrow to get the, to get the specifics. But he concluded that the new union district would be under no obligation to enroll students in Woodbury. And he, he also concluded that they, the, the new union district may not be obligated to enter into a lease agreement, even if that were an option. And, and Article 4, closure of the schools, yeah. I believe his conclusion was that the new union district is not obligated to use the building. They may not be obligated to enroll any students in the building and that they may not be obligated to enter into a lease, even if that were an option. So the, the meeting, the meeting was not substantive beyond that point because Joanne, she, in her opinion, and then all the members of the committee agreed that not only Woodbury, but Lakeview needed to go back and, and discuss the ownership of their property because Lakeview Union operates two buildings. One is, one is the school building, school proper. And then from my understanding, 4th, 5th, and 6th graders are, are educated in a building owned by the town. I believe it's the town hall.
Sure.
So there's some complications that arose there regarding Lakeview. So in light of those uncertainties, the meeting concluded. And we made no further progress on the amendments. And Patrick mentioned earlier that there has been, it's not a stay, but there's been a pause. Call it a pause, a pause in the litigation. And as a result, the, I believe it's the Attorney General issued an order to reschedule some of these meetings. And now as a result, the Articles Committee is no longer authorized to, to propose amended articles. Under, under this new timeframe, the Articles Committee may stay composed until February 28th. They may make essentially proposals that then go to, they either could go to the Transitional Board or the newly elected new union district board. And it would, it would be essentially at their discretion or at their.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that any changes in the article said that be effective by, I think it's February 28th.
Yes.
And so you have to warn the meeting and everything.
Yeah.
We pretty soon.
Not gonna happen. Well, I, I just don't think it's gonna happen. I think we've literally run ourselves out of time now. But as Stephen just said, there, the new board can go ahead and make changes in the articles down the road. So, but having said that, there is a meeting scheduled for next Monday, the 21st, with the Articles Committee and the Budget Advisory Committee to try to sort out all this stuff that's been thrown around for the past couple of weeks. I don't know what'll come out of that, you know? It's really hard to say.
In my opinion, Article 6, this Part A, the, the school district shall convey to the forming district for the sum of $1, all these real estate, real estate lands, buildings, property and all that. Isn't that short sighted? Do they believe that the districts, as they're comprised now, own the buildings? They didn't do any research to say, how many school buildings are actually owned by towns?
Well, that's exactly the problem.
To me, that's really short sighted. It's like presumptive, presuming that the school district, as they are comprised now, owns the building and, and land and all that, and they don't.
That's right.
You know, so to me, Article 6 is, is just.
It's like that doesn't apply and this is the problem. They didn't consider this when they wrote these, apparently. And so these almost don't apply to us. But it basically leaves us, what Stephen's saying, and this is what we've been told and I tend to agree, kind of leaves us on the outside. The new merged district could literally say, okay, Woodbury, if you don't wanna convey your buildings, fine, we'll just send the kids somewhere else. It seems like they have the authority to do that.
That's what I'm worried about, yeah.
I'll add to that also. At the committee's, the Articles Committee meeting on the 27th, when we were discussing this, this complication over the property ownership and possible leasing of the building to the, to the new union district, I tried to make a case for leasing. I said there would be less time and resources that the new union district would need to expend in managing and maintaining the property. And that the, the district itself would have some control over the negotiation in the lease. So it would put, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't give them a property that they had to manage. It would give them a property that they could cooperatively manage with the board. So it would provide another check on the costs. So I tried to make a case for the advantages of having a lease. And two of the three representatives from Hardwick on the committee expressed their opinion that the voters of Hardwick may oppose enrolling students in a, in a property that was leased. They didn't, it seemed like they didn't see that as being favorable. And Joanne, Joanne raised the point that there are a substantial amount of students in Hardwick who are homeschooled. So there's a vacancy in the Hardwick school building. So there is, there are empty seats there and I, this is, this is only my opinion based on, on what I observed, is that the, the people in Hardwick might say, well, we don't, we don't own that building. We don't need to use, referring to Woodbury, we don't need to use that building. We've got students, we've got potential here at our school. We're just gonna bring the Woodbury kids into Hardwick and fill the seats and, and improve the school. Sure, it's through good intentions. But again, it leaves Woodbury out. And we've got a long tradition. This school's over 100 years old, it's very well managed, it's efficient. In 2017, Woodbury, within the entire OSSU, had both the lowest budget, spending per pupil, and the highest, highest test scores in kneecap, English. So it's a high-performing, low-cost school. Wouldn't it be great to continue educating kids here, so?
So what they have to understand too is the sale of any municipal property has to include a public hearing. So we, as a select board, would have to call a public hearing and say, okay, here's a town asset that we've just come upon. And now this new forming school district wants to buy it for, from us for a dollar, you know? Would you be all right with that? And.
Where are the encumbrances in place though that we need to, would need to have to continue?
And it sounds like.
So I'm afraid of that meeting.
Lakeview is also, I mean, Greensboro and Standard are also in the same position. So will they close Woodbury and Lakeview and then have all the kids go to Hardwick? That's, that's what would happen if.
This is completely unpredictable, Mike.
Right, yeah.
And, and they can't, they can't close any school for two years.
Right.
If it's conveyed.
Except. First of all, it would be conveyed.
Well, a town school could not be closed unless the voters in the town approved. However, Lakeview, because they're a union school, they could be closed by an affirmative vote of the electorate. It puts them in a possibly more vulnerable position.
Very funky situation, if you ask me.
I'd like to add something here. Phoebe mentioned encumbrances and I've, I've raised that before, before I was on the board. The potential of, this is pending the opinion review of an attorney, but under Article 6, in the conveying of property, that the property would be conveyed for $1, subject to encumbrances of record. Been doing some research in that and I'd like to explore this more fully tomorrow night with the board. But there is an example I found, I believe it was in the town of Westford. I can look closely at my notes here after. But there is a deed, an encumbrance, it's an easement.
Can you kind of define?
Okay, okay, yes, yes.
Sound a little fuzzy.
Okay, yeah. Okay. What is, okay.
I mean, what was meant by encumbrances?
Okay.
Decisions?
Easements, covenants, providing rights to a third party. Or an, an encumbrance, in the case of an easement, diminish the value of the land by providing an additional right or restriction on the use of the land.
Could an example be when we use it for town meeting?
Yes.
When we use it for.
Emergency.
Pie breakfast.
Yes.
But certainly the emergency shelter is a legitimate, very legitimate.
Oh, for example, if some, if there's a right in the deed that somebody's water line passes the property, that would be.
I think we can put whatever we want in the lease. I think that's, encumbrance to me is not a term of art as much as it's a general term that.
Yeah, it sounds like a.
Is intended to include a lot of the things that Stephen would just mention. I think, none of us are attorneys, I don't think. And we should have our attorney ask what that means. But absolutely, I, I would be 100% in favor of, you know, putting everything in there that we want to make sure that the, the schools, the building is protected for. Whatever use we want, including other, you know, at some point, you just stick that language in there. So I think, I think we, that's where it takes us back to the lease, you know, or what are we calling this at this point?
Lease.
I think we should call it a lease. That's a term of art. You know, everybody knows what that means. Now let's put the encumbrances in there, whatever it is we want, so.
Yeah, I found my paperwork here. It, the, the sample or the example I found was in the town of Westford. Westford included these uses in the.
Conveyance.
In the, no, in the, in the easement, it was a deed. So it, let's see, was for use of the emerg, that Westford would be used as an emergency shelter with use of their emergency generator, town meetings and elections, and use of fields, recreation fields and trails. So this provided an easement.
Very similar.
For mutual use by the town and the school for use of that building. And it, it was of record, encumbrances of record. It was filed with the, with the clerk, town clerk. And it, I believe that it travels with the property, so it's.
I, I don't anticipate any issues with that if we were to convey the property.
This, this in Section 2 here says the premise will be open and accessible to all Woodbury residents for social, recreational, educational, and community purposes and shall serve as a resource for the town and organizations and residents of Woodbury. But we could flush that out and, you know, put bulleted items underneath.
I think the library should be under there, the right top.
Yes, that's a good point.
To me, that seems important.
It would need to be a, a right of way to access the town's wetland property, which is on the other side of the school district's wetland property if that doesn't end up being conveyed to the town.
That's a good point, yeah.
I think we could get together and.
I think that's what we should be doing.
Specify the rights that the town would want to retain in the, in the use of the building and the property. Yeah.
Where do the expenses of that get flushed out in an easement?
Well, that document, it starts to address expenses. And it basically says instead of rent, the school district will pay for maintenance, et cetera. And then it, it talks about expenses that might be incurred by non-school activities and they would be paid for by somebody else. And it's, it's a really good start. We just gotta hone it down, you know, fine tune it.
I'd like to add one more, one more point here. It's possible, from my understanding, and again, we need to discuss this with an attorney, but it's possible that we could add as a covenant permitted use for the, for the building and the property and restricted use. So permitted use would be direct education of students in school-related property and not use of our building for purely administrative purposes. So it's possible that we could input in this easement, this deed, this covenant, specific use for our building. So if we did convey it to the union, after two years, the board would not be able to vote to relocate our students attending. It may not just be Woodbury students, but relocate students to a different school and use our building for.
Administer the.
Administer. So it's possible that we could cover that in the covenant too. And it's, this is, we're given a bowl of lemons, this may be lemonade. That we may be able to, to work together here and come up with something that's better than, than what we're presented with in the Articles of Agreement.
Well, it depends on if the Articles of Agreement can be amended. From what I read or from what I hear, it's very difficult to do that.
Skip, no, please.
Because of the timing right now.
Right. You, you mentioned there were some points under Article 6 that were problematic for you.
Yeah, we can get into that.
Yeah. Okay, we can do that and we can bring that to the, we can bring that to the Articles Committee. These may be problematic for the other towns too. We had agreement on the committee. We addressed this Article 6, we struck Paragraph C. These, this was all provisional, you know, subject to approval by our boards and then the voters. But if, if there are, if there are points in, under Article 6 that, that raise concerns.
This is just, to me, is just fraught with, with errors.
All right, well, let's.
Especially 6B in the last paragraph. The town elects not to acquire ownership of the building. We already have ownership of the building. So, so it just, it doesn't pertain to the town. We'd ignore any other town in the state of Vermont who are falling under these Articles of Agreements for other new union districts. So to me, that, that third paragraph, and at least our article should be stricken. Because we own the building.
My feeling is that we have, at least two things have to happen sometime pretty soon. One is we have to, well, we're gonna have our meeting tomorrow night. We'll see from the school board discussion and with the supervisory union leadership there, you know, what the latest is. Maybe we get some direction on some of this.
Sure.
But I, I think we're all in agreement that we need to finish up a lease.
Okay.
And get it signed as soon as possible, right?
Absolutely.
I will just add to what Stephen suggested about encumbrances. We can put anything we want in a lease between us. But at some point, that lease would then be with the merged union. And that's why I think it would be healthy to bring the supervisory union into some of this sooner rather than later. Because at the last minute, they could say, well, we're not signing off on that. You know what I mean? So we don't wanna get into that tonight. I don't think you want us to spend two more hours on this tonight. But, so those are the two things I think have to be done. And whatever happens on the meeting on the 21st between the two supervisory union committees that I mentioned will be really important also to give us some direction. But we are running out of time.
I'm sure.
Problem.
The third piece of it, Patrick, too, that the real decision that also needs to be made is if the town elects to convey the buildings and the property to the new unified district.
It would have to be the voting town. It can't be this elector.
No, no, it has to be a town meeting and everything.
It would have to be the voters of Woodbury.
And what I heard would, you saying you didn't think that was a good idea and Michael saying he thought it was. How do we? How do we?
I just, well, statute says we have to have a public hearing.
We do, we do. And I'll tell you, my, my and I haven't even discussed this with my fellow board members yet, and it'll come up tomorrow night.
Sure.
But my feeling is, given the lay of the land, as I see it and understand it, I think we probably should be prepared to convey the property to the new district with, you know, ironclad assurances.
Yeah.
That if, if the school closes or whatever, it all comes back the way we want it. And that's up for us to, but that's, I'm just telling you ahead of time, my, my feeling is.
I don't want to be, I mean, we have to safeguard our assets, our interests, but I don't want to be combative to create sense of conflict right in the beginning where they'll just say, okay, the heck with the school and the kids, you know, they're going to Hardwick. I'd like to try to work something out with them, and so maybe including them ahead of time. I mean, that's, that sounds like a reasonable thing to do. And if they're total whatevers, then, then, you know, there's Plan B, I guess.
I have a question. Steve, did you ever, did the school board see the actual attorney's opinion? This, of OSSU's attorney, or did you just hear it filtered?
No, the board hasn't seen it yet.
Because it seemed to me like the I was, what I heard you say was a bunch of threats. They may not do this, they may not do that, they may not have to take our students.
Right.
I'd like to, but I don't know where that, that
Well, I think that'll come up tomorrow night as well, Diana, because there was some exchange, but it wasn't it wasn't shared with, with, with any board at this point. It's a little tricky in my mind because it's attorney advice, and typically that's not, it depends on what it's about. But sometimes that doesn't, that's not public.
Sure.
And this kind of falls in sort of in-between. But tomorrow night, we'll be talking about that, and we'll decide how to, how to handle that, because I think the board members deserve to see what the actual advice is.
Yeah, it shouldn't just be someone else's opinion of what
Right, right. It's sticky, sticky business, I'm telling you. Never seen anything.
If I could ask a question about the amendment committee. Was there concern on the part of the Woodbury Board of giving four seats to one town and leaving three seats for the other three towns? If I'm correct, that's what it would be. If you offer four seats to Hardwick and retain one each.
Well, as you may remember, if the default articles are in place, then it's two seats per town.
Right, but was that proposed in exchange for leaving?
Well, according to Stephen, it was. Isn't that for the transitional board, then?
Transitional board, yes, but it's also for the initial board. And for one, for, I think, some period, until it's changed, basically. That's the way the new board is constructed. Now, having said that, yes, there was a proposal to change it, which I am now one bit surprised. I'm in Hardwick.
Well, actually, it came from Greensboro.
Lakeview proposed it, and I found that favorable. And that, that was still subject to discussion among the board.
But you, you found favorable because it was in exchange for some language around keeping schools open.
Yeah.
So it was one of these negotiations.
Yep, that's what it was.
But in my, in my opinion, you know, just look at the population. Hardwick has 2,800, you know, or more residents. We've got, what, 900? Give or take? 800 in Greensboro, 200 in Standard. We have, I mean, if you just do the math, they should have four seats. And we should each have one. But
I, I guess I just want to express that I find, I do find that somewhat alarming, because then Woodbury, including the two other towns, would never have a say in the budget. We will always be outvoted. So you may end up with a school in your town, but maybe a school you no longer want, because you can drive that out through the budget. And I just want to lay that out there as a very big word of warning. That's a big thing to agree to.
I really think the town should have equal, equal number of reps, two, two per town.
People in Hardwick
I know they do. I really do. But, I mean, it's, that's like the difference between the House of Representatives and the Senate. I think you should follow a Senate path.
Yes.
And it does not work that way on the Hazen Board. There's not, one town does not have a majority.
Those are small towns are just gonna get overridden every time. I mean, that's my anticipation.
Let's just not lose sight that like, you know, five, 10 years down the line, the budget in the end is gonna rule what kind of school you have.
Well, my feeling, I, I completely agree with you. This is fraud. Start to finish, with all kinds of difficult issues, that it's gonna be hard to get agreement on. Some of these things can only be, like the Articles, changing the Articles, that's done by the whole electorate. That's in the, that's in, that can't be changed. So if somebody wants to change the voting, it's gonna be the whole electorate that votes on it, not us. And we'll have, you know, I'm gonna really have say about it. So it's just fraud, the whole thing.
Here's something else to consider. We're talking about the composition of the board, representation from each town. After, on or after the new union district's annual meeting in 2020, the voters of the new union district, most of whom are residents, voters from Hardwick, they could vote to amend these Articles and reconfigure the board. So we're
If I'm not mistaken, once the new board is, is constructed, they can vote to change the Articles anytime.
The board can not be elected.
Well, the board proposes it, but the electorate has to approve it.
Right.
But the board can choose to do that any, once they're formed. In fact, that was, I think what we were saying the other night was how we were gonna deal with some of these issues was, we don't have time now, but once the new board is formed, we would have an opportunity to re, you know, redo the, anyway.
So that, so that, that composition of the board could be reconfigured by the electorate? They could, they could amend the Articles.
I'm willing to bet you that the people in Hardwick are gonna insist that that be more representative or more proportional. I've been saying this all along. If I'm in Hardwick, I don't get why they should only have two votes, and Standard should have two. I mean, it's just, but Brett's also right. I mean, that's where all the power is gonna be. Anything else I can do for you tonight?
So our to-dos are, get the lease.
Yeah.
Okay, get it tight, so.
Get those encumbrances in there.
Get the encumbrances. I'll send emails out to the select board and Diana and
I'd like to make sure, please, I'm included on that.
Okay.
Well, we want to discuss it, as I said, tomorrow night, and then we, we can have a formal process or agreement, maybe a subcommittee just focus on that for a couple of weeks and get it done. Back and forth, I think, as long as we agree on all that, people are copied, it should be all right.
And get an attorney, if you need one.
Well, I'm working on that.
Sounds like we definitely need one.
Working on it.
And, yeah. How do we feel about Patrick's suggestion that we start including the lawyers or the supervisory union, just to be ears?
We can send them a draft, I think, of the lease. Keep them included. That's, that's wise.
To avoid nasty surprises.
Yeah.
Now, we already have Paul Gillies working for us. Can the school board also use Paul Gillies?
No, we should have some.
You should have some.
Probably someone who does.
That would be nice.
Well, it would be really nice, but I think it's a potential conflict of interest.
Sure, it would be.
I don't think it will be.
I, I requested that the board propose changes to Article Six, in the event that we do convey the school to the district, and then on to the new union district, that, that Article Six squares with the interests of the town.
So when you say the board, are you saying the select board?
Select board, yes. Yeah.
I hadn't even thought about that. I don't think the idea is for the town to convey the property to the school district. I think that we have a lease. And then, when the time comes, we ought to have the discussion about conveying it directly to the new district.
Oh, from the
Yeah.
Directly from the town.
And would that time happen when the new union district becomes an entity formally, or would it happen after the two-year?
No, it would actually happen. If it's gonna happen, it would actually happen before June 30th.
Okay.
Or before July 30th.
It's a little later than
It wouldn't be part of that organizational meeting, though, would it? No.
No, it wouldn't happen at the organizational meeting. It would happen separately, and as Skip says, you have to have a town meeting to approve that decision anyway. And you start backing up all these states, you know.
This raises a question here, because under Article Six, it says the forming district shall convey to the new union district the property. I don't see anything in here
About the town doing that.
Any other, any other owners conveying the property.
That's why I think Article Six is just so fraught with
The forming district and the new union district.
The forming district, that, in this, in our case, would be considered Woodbury School District, yeah.
But, but that's assuming, I hear what you're saying, you may be right, maybe we have no trace, but that's, that's assuming that the, that the school district owns the building. And since they don't, I don't understand. Well, we'll find out.
Well, that's, but we need to have that question answered.
Yeah.
But if the voters of Woodbury agree that the town could convey, or should convey, the property to the new union district, it's only it would simply be passing through the school, the Woodbury School District. It would be another transaction.
Does the state board know the confusion that they've created with they do? Okay, good.
Well, we have a member on that who certainly knows.
Yes, I do.
I've been chatting with Beer. Okay.
All right, all right, we'll move forward. I'll cc everyone. All my emails. Brett, if you want to keep that?
Yes, may I keep that? Thank you.
We're gonna be seeing a lot of each other.
Oh, yeah. I'd like pizza and beer.
Who pays for it?
The new forming district.
Grab me a chair, not somewhere, no.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Tomorrow night?
Yeah. So they're meeting tomorrow at the school?
Yeah.
Library or in the school?
In the school, you know, the little, the room that, in the basement where they have their meetings.
That's a good one.
Kind of on.
Okay, yeah.
Go down the stairs and kind of go through as you can.
And then to the left, yeah.
All righty, moving along. Do something drop for me, Brett.
Almost worked.
I know. What am I stepping on?
A question for you. Michael, probably. Guardrails, have you guys done any more since the last
No, it's always sort of been on hold because money's getting spent in other places, yeah.
Okay.
And I, somewhere there was, you know, like a survey or recommendation done, which I have not been able to find anywhere. I don't know.
On other places, it should be guardrails?
Yeah, other places that were suggesting for guardrails.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious if you'd ever put any monies aside to
No.
Continue that.
We, I think we've kind of postponed guardrail things when we did the Nelson Pond Road culvert, and then now there's just been, then the municipal road, general permit stuff started happening, so it's just been and I can't find, you know, what was recommended. I contacted the Regional Planning Commission, D-Trans, no one seems to know where it is. Perry knew where it was, but I think I'll have Paul Gillies do some research.
So, back to our budget. There was a question regarding Ron Wells. And his listers pay right now. He's compensated at $15 an hour. And we thought that was low, and we were going to increase it. So I gave Ron a call and talked to him about what he actually does here. And he's the only one, really, that enters any of the information into Nemrick, into the lister's application software. None of the other listers do that, so Ron and I had a discussion and we agreed upon, Ron and I at least, agreed upon his salary of $18 an hour. And I just wanted to run that by you, if you thought that was fair.
That works. Do we need it by motion, or just all agreeing?
I would say, since the meeting now, I'd like to make a motion to increase Ron's salary to $18 an hour.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. So how is he, with his collector bill, with taxes?
He's fine with that. Yeah, we're talking about
Yeah, good.
Okay.
So that being said, on page two.
Page two.
At the very bottom?
Yes.
I would still keep it the same. Your inputs?
Yeah, I mean, the others kind of love very minimal hours. That's true, yeah. So I have
Seven thousand?
Seven thousand, seven thousand.
For lister? For listers?
Yes.
Do you want to increase that, or do you want to keep it the same?
Well
Is there anything big coming up, or are you doing any?
All the PTTRs need to be done.
PTTRs, property transfer taxes.
That's what Ron does?
Yeah, you have to enter all those into the system, then you have to change them.
I'd increase that to $8,000 if he has to.
Because once it comes to my tax bills, I go through the PTTRs and
He's the only one that does this. Right, and I'm beating him.
Yeah. That just gives us a little wiggle room in case he gets some extra time, because he was 5,800 last year.
Still waiting on personal public rescue to give us an out. But there was something I was looking, and it's still Sylvia Jackson.
Who mentioned that Mary wanted to ask for more?
Put it, it's presently for Sylvia Jackson?
It's like that. That's my, that's my memory.
So these are for your records.
Thank you.
Sylvia Jackson is 61, 43.
And she wants it higher because she's anticipating
Diana, you have a second?
Didn't we, didn't we have a yearly appropriation into that fund? Or do we, I mean
It was a thousand.
It was a thousand. Last year, we put
Sylvia Jackson?
So is it the yearly appropriation that she wants increased?
Yes.
Yeah, I told Mary she had to write in
I have a town record, a town report.
Do you know, she using it a lot more or something, or is there a reason why she wants to bump it up?
No, I don't, I don't think there have been that many requests.
Is there a serving balance?
Yeah, there was, no, there is. Yeah, $6,100.
All right, so it's good.
Well, last year in the book, we had a Sylvia Jackson report, but it was only a little I reminded her that she should submit something like that.
I think if she wants more, that she should come to the Blackboard and tell us why. To keep it at a thousand.
I think a thousand is
Yeah, until we start using it more or see that
Yeah, if the government shuts down and people aren't getting their food stamps and stuff like that, yeah.
You got any good stuff over there?
Uniforms.
Uniforms, all right, I have that. So It's in the highway budget.
On a, a J.
So and that was the road crew, mostly the two grays, and they would like to get T-shirts for everybody. So it would be $500 is what I'm thinking, which is a budget for uniforms, and then to keep the $350 stipend for clothing. So this, the uniforms would be in addition to the clothing stipend.
So 1,200.
Well, 850, but I'm, my, one question I had was, do we want to have a clothing stipend for the part-timers also?
For uniforms, sure.
For uniforms, yes. The $500 for the uniforms is for all for full-time and part-time. And I'm just wanting to give you a little insight on for the part-time.
Oh, name of the pro rata stuff?
Yeah, kind of a prorated thing, like we're giving 300.
That'd be kind of tough, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, until we
Okay. I, I, there's just a question that I had that I wanted to ask you guys about.
They do it for us full-timers, just as a, as a nice benefit, but
Okay. So, so then $500
Lost the 700, so 1,200.
Yes. Yes.
So they've got to wash these things too.
So.
Once in a while.
No employee deduct, deduction contribution?
No.
Yes, so that should be struck and.
Struck in.
Struck in. Are you set for the wages for Peter and Tim?
I calculated the new.
Okay.
Let's go back, okay, so Peter is sixteen-six.
What page were you on?
Oh, sorry, eight.
Okay. So eight-six.
So for Peter, sixteen thousand six hundred. That's twenty hours at his increase, times fifty-two. So then we have Tim, at seventeen-seven, seventeen thousand seven hundred. Social Security and Medicare, ten thousand.
How much is this saving then?
Ten?
Yes. So when I look at Bob there and Dave Pike's wages, you know, it's just, it's kind of a wash, from what we did in fiscal year 2019.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dave Pike was making thirteen something per hour, I think, and Bob was making about what Tim, Tim is now, or will be making in the next fiscal year. So let's see.
Sixteen ninety-five, yeah.
So uniforms. So do we need to create, let's see, do we have a line item in the Nemrick for, for the clothing reimbursement? I see we have one for uniforms.
It's just uniforms.
So should we make us two separate line items?
They have a credit card for, they have a credit card.
Okay.
So what, they've been doing, whether they order on Amazon, they order their clothing, use the, the, his credit card, and then I deduct to Adam.
Okay. And Greg Adams mentioned that, that he was able to buy some uniforms with that clothing reimbursement. They gave me the catalog, the UniFirst or Uni, so that'll, that'll work with their credit card, is that how they would do that with?
Or I can use the town credit card.
Okay, all right.
If they want me to place the order, I placed the order last time.
Okay, so uniforms should be twelve hundred dollars, okay, and that includes both.
One question. If we can go back to page four. And the town number zero-one-dash-five-dash-twenty-dash-forty-three, legal expense?
Yeah, we discussed five thousand.
Yeah, so. In light of what we just discussed with the school boards, should we consider increasing that?
You know, we may have spent that before we get to the fiscal year.
Yeah, I know.
Oops, sorry.
That's right, because right now, you know, Paul's gonna have to look at the lease after.
Right.
The two boards get together.
Yeah, there's going to be more expenses, but that.
It probably will be done, that's what.
And that was going over the bills today, that just reminded, um, the.
That was still ongoing.
The Paul, yeah, the Paul Gillis thing, but should we label, I mean, it was labeled Jennifer Harmon, but really, the bulk of that expense was for the, Paul's work with the lease, so should we label it, or at least have, just have more than just her name there?
Well, there's not much room, but I can try and split it.
Because, you know, the, in that total bill of eight hundred and some dollars, for Jennifer, it was about eighty dollars. And for the school, the lease, it was seven hundred and some dollars, so.
If you can split those out.
Yeah, somehow just to.
There's no item line split out, but, but yeah, you click on.
Because it, because it kind of infers, I mean, when anyone else looking at that, who didn't look at the actual bill, would think that we had to spend eight hundred more dollars on.
Jennifer Harmon.
Jennifer Harmon.
That's not a good thing.
Or just change the wording over so that Jennifer's not on it, just use the other.
Yeah, we could just use the school.
Use the school for.
I mean, the school lease.
I can't go back and edit the check.
Okay, okay, right.
Going forward, yeah, the check's written. Right in the memo, yeah.
Should we then increase the five thousand dollars?
For next year?
Yeah.
I would hope that we wouldn't have to, but.
I know.
Yeah, because we had a lot of legal last year.
It is an unusual amount, would you?
Is there going to be more legal as far as the store?
The school, you mean?
No.
Stores probably not.
Maybe. You'll have a short date, maybe.
But that's, that's all, that's all going to come from the grant.
Yeah.
So.
Always have to do it upfront.
Yeah, so that'll be.
Be washed eventually.
Yeah, but this would be just for, you know, fending off the new school district. And we may have to have another lease drawn up between the new school district, or Villa Sail, between the town and the new school district.
Yeah, well, how much, see, he charged us seven hundred dollars for that.
Hundred and forty dollars an hour.
Yeah, charged us seven hundred dollars for the draft of the lease, and. Boy, it's hard to say, how about, we could bump it up another thousand.
Okay, yeah.
So I'm just looking. Just looking at our history here.
Right.
We, in fiscal year 2018.
Right, that's true, we have had two years of over, yeah, maybe we should go even more.
So being in the litigious society that we are in, perhaps it would be smart. It might be, were you going to stick just eight thousand, because that's.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking now, I mean, if we don't spend it, that would be wonderful.
Right.
Because, you know, fiscal year nineteen, we're going to spend, I mean, the, the bill that we just got would be added to this now.
Right.
Yeah, so, you know, we're already up at nine thousand something.
We probably don't have any idea right now where our budget stands as far as, are we up or down how much from last year, or?
For what, legal?
No, for the whole, for the whole budget.
I haven't, because I still have to punch in some new, I haven't finished punching in numbers.
Yeah.
I won't know until.
So do we have all the numbers in yet?
We do now, yeah.
Yeah, the, that'll be interesting to see, you know, how close we are to last year and.
So we can, we can do something like this, right, here's the zero-one-dash-five-dash-ten.
Yeah.
Payroll expenses.
Yeah.
So you go down here, and total payroll expenses, we budgeted this amount, and today it's that amount. So that's what's good about Nemrick.
Yeah.
You can do, you know, almost daily, daily budget.
Well, one thing Greg mentioned is that he has made a couple calls about the tires for the greater. He got a, an estimate, and this would be installing the tires, buying them and paying to have them put on. From the England Tire, eighty-five hundred dollars, and from Rouse, I think I pronounced that correctly, seventy-eight hundred dollars, so. I wanted to just, I haven't really looked where that would go. We have, we have a line item for tires, and.
That's going to be on next year's?
Yeah.
I thought we were doing that this year.
Yeah.
Since.
Yeah, I mean, we probably would do it this year, so that.
Get it out of this year's budget?
Yeah.
What does the budget look like for this year?
I don't know, let's just get there, let's make sure we're okay with this. I meant to look at that before.
Page eleven?
Before we, so tires, you know, that would be tires for all the trucks. And so far this year, you know, we've, I think we've got tires, we're set for tires now for this fiscal year, so there's, basically, from what we budgeted, there's, you know, forty-five hundred dollars, five thousand dollars, forty, let's call it forty-eight hundred dollars, so. We're halfway there for, or more than half, for what the greater tires were. And I don't, what did we, do we have a budget I need for the greater, I mean, maybe the two of those split would cover the tires. Yeah, there is a certain amount that we have budgeted for the greater.
Well, this year we budgeted seventy-five hundred, we've only spent four hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Okay, so.
So between those two.
Those two would cover the tires for this fiscal year.
So we don't have to add that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I think we're good, we're good for tires for this fiscal year, and then the, whatever new winter tires they would need for next year could be purchased after July first.
Yeah.
And usually they are.
That's right, July first.
Because Greg got a new kind of tire that holds up better with the chains, and the plan is to, so he's taken a lot of tires off, but, so there's a plan of switching back and using older tires for the summer, and using up ones that are kind of beat up from the chains. So he's hoping that the tires will, will last a little bit longer. Okay, so I will, I guess that Greg may know that.
Do you want to send me that?
Send your way.
That's what you were looking at? No, this one right here.
That's spreadsheet.
No, because I don't want to use that. Oh, this is the tax rate one.
Yeah. I just, copies of the same thing. If you want, if you can send me this information.
When we're done, you can just plug it in online?
I'll just plug it in, or we can have our other Excel whiz.
So if we sell the five fifty before next fiscal year?
You know.
There's our cushion, so we don't have to steal from the code.
I, I assume that we will sell it before the next fiscal year. Greg, we'd really love to be able to use it for the rest of the winter, but fix it up in the spring. We've talked a little bit about trying to use a six-wheeler for the salting. Because it does really help time-wise for them to get out on the road plowing, to have the salt in the five fifty, you know, salts in it now, so if we could fix up the five fifty in the spring, get it looking nice.
But if that six-wheeler has a bad rear end?
Right.
A leaky, leaky rear end case?
Yeah.
Should kind of fix that too, if we intend to keep that.
Is it noisy just because it keeps getting low when they hook up in?
No, they, they keep it up, I think they're just thinking that the gears are, you know, starting to, are pretty well worn.
Starting to howl.
Yeah, so. No, they're aware of the leak and definitely check it pretty, pretty regularly, but it's, you know, it's, it's just making a lot of noise.
Does that mean more is going to need to go into the, the dump? I mean, dump truck?
If they have to put a rear end in it, then that'll be.
Because we only budgeted fifteen hundred.
That's probably going to need to be more if they need a rear end.
Let me check.
Would it be done this fiscal year, or?
Yeah, let me check with Greg about that, I can, I'll check.
That's on page ten.
I'll give him a call about that, so let me look at that.
Check three. I'll circle that in the question mark.
Check three, six-wheeler, replace rear end, because Greg will have a pretty good sense of.
And that is really, really our oldest.
It is.
Doesn't owe us any, though.
Replace rear end cost. And then should we budget for fiscal year twenty? All right, I'll call him tomorrow morning. Anything else in there, Brandy, that you?
I did increase Greg's premium assistance.
Yes.
After figuring out the numbers today, I'll be putting in check for three hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-four cents monthly.
And then after taxes, it comes?
It comes out to the three fifteen take home. So I bump that up to forty-six.
Okay. Greg wondered, could that be sent, if we sent it directly to Blue Cross Blue Shield, would, would taxes be taken out? If we sent it directly to his wife's insurance?
I don't think we can do that.
Okay, all right, I, just a question, it was a question, you know, if we could, huh?
What would that gain, Michael?
It would gain, we would be paying less per month, we would be paying like sixty-something dollars less, if we could pay the three hundred, the three hundred and fifty amount directly to Blue Cross Blue Shield rather than three hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Including taxes, right.
Including tax, it would eliminate the.
And then he still gets to claim them in the end.
That would be an accounting nightmare.
Okay, yeah, I, you know, it was just a question, and it did seem kind of somewhat convoluted, but trying to.
I think it would be an accounting nightmare to do that. Because you would have to get some sort of an account set up and go across the Blue Shield and do the transfer.
I wouldn't do a transfer, we just do checks, safer, raises.
Well, that could, kind of.
But, um.
But that's not even, you know, it's not even Greg Parker's, like.
Right.
Health, health insurance accounts, his wife, so it would be, it might be tricky, my Blue Cross Blue Shield might not want to do it either.
Is it worth looking at, how much would you figure it would save a month?
Well, it'd be seven, sixty-five dollars.
Three fifteen, right.
A month, so that'd be six hundred, that'd be about eight hundred, hundred and two dollars.
New uniforms.
Yeah, if, if we could do it, and it can say it was eight hundred bucks, that's eight hundred bucks, but if it's not something.
I mean.
It's a benefit to Greg, so does he pay a tax on that or anything, does that change anything?
It's no benefit to him, I mean, we're, we have to make the amount more.
He was paying tax on him, he was paying tax on the one eighty-five.
Right, so he was getting even less.
Well, in the end, he gets to claim that, I mean, it comes out in the taxes, he still claims it is.
So he would claim.
But this way, when, I'm not sure, because during taxes, you have to claim the health insurance you buy.
See, I, I have to claim taxes on my Verizon retirement, on my health insurance. So that comes as a separate form that I have to pay taxes on, because it's a benefit.
Tax benefit. I mean, Greg's wife does the bookkeeping for Washington County Mall Health, we could ask her, would it be better that the town paid directly to your insurance, health insurance?
I'd rather it pass to BLCT.
Okay.
And, and if it's an issue versus accounting, and then I would put a call into Nemrick or, or even the state saying, is this going to be a conflict of interest, is it?
Yeah, are we beating somebody by doing it, we shouldn't be.
Because we are, we're getting hit, yeah.
Yeah, we're getting, paying taxes, if we could not pay taxes, that would be nice, but.
Yeah, yeah, that would save us, paying the guy, if we.
You'd still have an item line, same as.
Yeah, we still have.
If it's an invoice, whether we submit it to us.
Just go someplace else.
Yeah, we're, we're still paying it out, but do you want to do the research?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
I think that's it, I think we're good, I'm going to plug in those numbers, do you want me to bounce it to you digitally, or do you want to pick up a hard copy?
Digitally, please.
That way, your ending numbers, you'll be able to see them right in front of you, just slap into that, forward it to me. I'm going to have to, since you're leaving me, download that file, that chart, because I think it, it should be in the town report, since this is not going to have it on it, so.
So this will be in the town report?
As is.
Yeah.
Any file from Nemrick can be downloaded into a PDF.
Nice.
Yeah, but it's not, once I plug in my numbers, it's going to be actual.
Okay.
It's not going to be ten months, unless I go back and plug them in, and that throws in another chance of error.
Do you have these plugged in tomorrow on the sheet, or?
I have eighty-five percent of it plugged in right now.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it'll be nothing to slap in the rest.
The, the kind of webinar thing that we subscribe to every year, are there webinars for dealing with spreadsheets and things like that?
Oh, yeah.
Somebody better learn that.
There's an Excel, another Excel that I. There's an Excel, another Excel that I've been wanting to go to attend.
The, the, the Excel maiden is right there.
Okay.
And, right here.
So yeah, I have attended the first one, the second level, it's an all-day, it's in Williston.
Is there a first, first level?
Yeah, I already attended that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's basic.
I think I would like to do that also.
I'm available for consultations too.
Okay.
Because I'll be around.
Don't say that.
Not a speed dial.
I hope, I hope I'll be around. I don't see why I wouldn't.
I already got your name on an apron, and yours also.
I don't want.
And on your pie breakfast is coming up.
Oh, a name on an apron, oh boy.
I was going to say. Is that going to be my new job?
Well, I want my kitchen toast, I lost without it.
What is pie breakfast?
It is March sixteenth.
Okay, all right, I think we're done. Well, it's eight-thirty-two, we're only a half hour late this time, which I suppose is okay. Excuse me, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at eight-thirty-two.
I'll second that.
On my favor?
Aye.